No worries. It is 6:35. I'm calling the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to turn it over to Fran McCusker, who has some announcements.
Thanks, J.C. The White Marsh Township Police Department, in partnership with State Representative Mary Jo Daly, will be hosting a license plate restoration event on Saturday, October 11th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the White Marsh Township Police Department parking lot. Well Street Cleanup will be on Saturday, October 11th, 2025, starting at 8:00 a.m. Anyone interested can meet the group at Well Street, located across from Cedar Grove Road. Witches of White Marsh Hayride will take place on October 21st through 23rd, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Cedar Grove Park. Pre-registration is required and can be found on our website. Saturday, October 25th, is Drug Takeback Day, where people can turn in any unused or expired medications for safe disposal. Our drop-off location will be in the lobby of the White Marsh Police Department from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This event is sponsored by the Montgomery County District Attorney and Police Chiefs. This season's leaf collection program will begin on October 27th and end on December 12th. Finally, Friday, October 31st, is Halloween. To ensure the safety of the children, please drive slow, stay alert, and eliminate distractions while driving. Children's costumes should be highly visible or have glow sticks and bracelets to increase visibility. Let's keep everyone safe and have a happy Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. I just want to let everybody know that Patrice Tureen Supervisor is joining us online tonight, and Vince Manuel will not be with us this evening. And before we begin, I just want to take a moment. Our annual tree giveaway was held on Saturday, 9/27. It was a huge success with 250 trees given away, and I want to take a moment to thank all those folks that make it possible every year for us to do this. Samantha Zrillo, our township planner, organizes this every year and does an amazing job. Joe Brown from Public Works helped cut protective fencing, and we had many volunteers, including the entire Shade Tree Commission, Christian Fassbender, the Chair, Vera Kostabotsky, the Vice Chair, Dave DiAmore, Fran Kelly, and Natalie Borkowski. I also want to thank Charlie Guttenplan, who was there the day of and helped. Thank you, Charlie. Our arborist, John Hosbach, who gave us three employees for the day, which were incredibly helpful, and also residents Karen Cadnik and Deborah Harris from the Environmental Advisory Board, and all of our other volunteers. They spend a great amount of time choosing species, cutting fencing, unloading the truck, and being there the day of to direct explain proper planting and getting trees into cars. This was our fifth year, and we're really excited for all of the trees that we've already put in the ground and all of the trees to come. There will be a highlight video with some interviews from volunteers. It's going to be on our website, so please check it out. And if you have trees that you've gotten from this sale or any of the others in the past, please send us pictures. We want to see how your trees are doing. Really excited to already get some pictures in with families that are excited to plant, kids that are in the car with their families as they put them in the vehicles. It's really just a wonderful, wonderful thing, and we're proud to be able to do it. So thank you. All right, I'm going to go into the meeting now. Approval of the Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Supervisors' Meeting Minutes from September 11th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to move down to public hearings. Review SLD 03-23R2, Mile One Fort Washington LLC, revised major land development, minor subdivision, BMW dealership expansion, 500 through 512 Pennsylvania Avenue, Fort Washington. I'm going to turn it over to Charlie Guttenplan.
Thank you. This is an old friend. We've seen this plan before. You last approved-
I thought you were talking about me.
Well, you too, John. We last approved a revised plan for the BMW dealership in February. They've made some very minor modifications to the building and to some modification to the circulation to avoid some conflicts. Planning Commission saw this on September 9th, made two motions, one to recommend approval of the waivers necessary, and the other to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plan. I'll turn it over to John Ionosi.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Essentially, a picture's worth a thousand words. The only thing that really has changed is you'll see that the two different projects was previously approved plan, where we had our customers going over four drive aisles enter the building. During the process, so that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. It's safer to do the new proposed plan, where they can access the building without crossing the driveways. We are in receipt of all the review letters. All those items will be a will comply. I just want to personally thank the township staff. They made a good plan, a better plan, and it's always a pleasure to work with them. So happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
No.
Any public questions or comments? All right. Hold on a second. All right, I'm going to move down to resolutions. Consider Resolution 2025-21 for approval of a preliminary, final, minor subdivision, lot consolidation, and major land development for the BMW dealership property located at 500 to 512 Pennsylvania Avenue, Fort Washington. Mr. McAnally?
Oh, so I'm-
So moved.
Second.
For the roll call, Ms. Tureen?
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Moy?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair, toll.
Yes. Resolution carries.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move down to review SLD 05-25, Union League Liberty Hill, land development waiver request, ballroom expansion, lobby and drop-off areas at 800 Ridge Pike Lafayette Hill. Back to you, Charlie.
Thank you. This is a land development waiver request for what you just described at Liberty Hill. It's primarily a ballroom expansion, lobby modification, and a drop-off portico share. And the Planning Commission looked at this also on September 9th. They verified that Krista had no concerns of the applicant's ability to address all the reviews, and they made a motion to recommend the land development waiver. With that, I will turn it over to Bob Carolis.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here tonight. I'm joined tonight by Michelle Christensen, who's the General Manager of Liberty Hill, Union League, and Greg Newell, our Design Professional, who'll come up in just a second to show you some of the pictures. This is a waiver request on a net-net basis. We're not being additive here, which is why we're asking for the waiver of land development. This is not a project where you would see some of the improvements that we're proposing that would be guaranteed by financial security. So on that basis, which Greg will go through, we think it's the, we would ask you to look favorably on the waiver request. We are in receipt of the draft resolution, which we're in agreement with. As Charlie mentioned, we will continue to work with Krista and township staff through the process here, through the grading permit process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg to come up. He'll just briefly run through some of the presentation materials that we have for you tonight, and then we're obviously happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Focusing on Bob's comment about brief and quick, we'll make sure we do that. So the, really, all it's doing is taking the existing, where the existing portico share is. There's a ballroom, and the way it was built originally, there was a ballroom on either end of the complex. Practically speaking, that makes a logistical challenge, and so all we're simply doing is shifting the ballroom to one area above the new portico share. Otherwise, we're not really making any changes to parking or so forth. We're not increasing or expecting increase in the number of attendees. That shows you there, where the project area is. If any of you are familiar or have been out there, you know where the helipad is out there. It's in that same area. That helipad will go. And that's where the building, under its current conditions, look like. That just shows you the location. And that's a plan view, looking down at the overall building. You can see that side came down. We did a little expansion, and the ballroom is simply above. That shows the, the nice part is you have a much better circulation pattern for being able to drop people off so that they can come. My mother-in-law would appreciate this, by the way, making it a lot easier. And the way the circulation is, you can have people at a couple of different spots. There isn't one car tying everything up type of deal. It's just a much more logistically sound pattern. And that's the idea of what it'll look like. You're looking on that left side. That's where the helipad would be, in the left side of that, where the helipad is. So we just, pretty much just tie that addition into what's out there already, basically the same heights and things of that nature. We're swapping out stormwater. We've worked at, Krista and I worked on a lot of projects together, so we've worked at, the great part is there, and of course, they recycle all the stormwater, and it's used in the golf course. So, and then we're working on a landscape plan, which we know will coordinate with the township.
Thank you. So any board comment or questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the motion. May I have a motion regarding Resolution 2025-22 for a conditional waiver of land development for Union League Liberty Hill LLC, located at 800 Ridge Pike Lafayette Hill, for an addition to the ballroom, lobby area, and drop-off area?
So moved.
Second.
Craig, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Ms. Moy?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair, toll.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Enjoy all the games.
Review LSA grant for White Marsh Community Ambulance Association for a new garage, alerting and fire alarm system for the station at 4019 Joshua Road Lafayette Hill. Mr. McAnally?
Yes, this is a request from White Marsh Community Ambulance Association to put in a grant for $65,000 for them to add a new garage in the parking lot, an alert, and fire alarm system in the building. This is a no-match grant. If they do receive it, they will get the money to put these three improvements on their property. However, for the LSA grant, you need municipal support. So they're looking for our support and to sign off on this resolution so they can put in the application.
Thank you. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, may I have a motion for Resolution 2025-23 for LSA grant for White Marsh Community Ambulance Association for a new garage, alerting system, and fire alarm system for the station at 4019 Joshua Road Lafayette Hill?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Ms. Moy?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair, toll.
Yes. Resolution carries.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move down to review SLD 05-25, Union League Liberty Hill, land development waiver request, ballroom expansion, lobby and drop-off areas at 800 Ridge Pike Lafayette Hill. Back to you, Charlie.
Thank you. This is a land development waiver request for what you just described at Liberty Hill. It's primarily a ballroom expansion, lobby modification, and a drop-off portico share. And the Planning Commission looked at this also on September 9th. They verified that Krista had no concerns of the applicant's ability to address all the reviews, and they made a motion to recommend the land development waiver. With that, I will turn it over to Bob Carolis.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here tonight. I'm joined tonight by Michelle Christensen, who's the General Manager of Liberty Hill, Union League, and Greg Newell, our Design Professional, who'll come up in just a second to show you some of the pictures. This is a waiver request on a net-net basis. We're not being additive here, which is why we're asking for the waiver of land development. This is not a project where you would see some of the improvements that we're proposing that would be guaranteed by financial security. So on that basis, which Greg will go through, we think it's the, we would ask you to look favorably on the waiver request. We are in receipt of the draft resolution, which we're in agreement with. As Charlie mentioned, we will continue to work with Krista and township staff through the process here, through the grading permit process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg to come up. He'll just briefly run through some of the presentation materials that we have for you tonight, and then we're obviously happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Focusing on Bob's comment about brief and quick, we'll make sure we do that. So the, really, all it's doing is taking the existing, where the existing portico share is. There's a ballroom, and the way it was built originally, there was a ballroom on either end of the complex. Practically speaking, that makes a logistical challenge, and so all we're simply doing is shifting the ballroom to one area above the new portico share. Otherwise, we're not really making any changes to parking or so forth. We're not increasing or expecting increase in the number of attendees. That's, that shows you there, where the project area is. If any of you are familiar or have been out there, you know where the helipad is out there. It's in that same area. That helipad will go. And that's where the building, under its current conditions, look like. That just shows you the location. And that's a plan view, looking down at the overall building. You can see that side came down. We did a little expansion, and the ballroom is simply above. That shows the, the nice part is you have a much better circulation pattern for being able to drop people off so that they can come. My mother-in-law would appreciate this, by the way, making it a lot easier. And the way the circulation is, you can have people at a couple of different spots. There isn't one car tying everything up type of deal. It's just a much more logistically sound pattern. And that's the idea of what it'll look like. You're looking on that left side. That's where the helipad would be, in the left side of that, where the helipad is. So we just, pretty much just tie that addition into what's out there already, basically the same heights and things of that nature. We're swapping out stormwater. We've worked at, Krista and I worked on a lot of projects together, so we've worked at, the great part is there, and of course, they recycle all the stormwater, and it's used in the golf course. So, and then we're working on a landscape plan, which we know will coordinate with the township.
Thank you. So any board comment or questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the motion. May I have a motion regarding Resolution 2025-22 for a conditional waiver of land development for Union League Liberty Hill LLC, located at 800 Ridge Pike Lafayette Hill, for an addition to the ballroom, lobby area, and drop-off area?
So moved.
Second.
Craig, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Ms. Moy?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair, toll.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Enjoy all the games.
Review LSA grant for White Marsh Community Ambulance Association for a new garage, alerting and fire alarm system for the station at 4019 Joshua Road Lafayette Hill. Mr. McAnally?
Yes, this is a request from White Marsh Community Ambulance Association to put in a grant for $65,000 for them to add a new garage in the parking lot, an alert, and fire alarm system in the building. This is a no-match grant. If they do receive it, they will get the money to put these three improvements on their property. However, for the LSA grant, you need municipal support. So they're looking for our support and to sign off on this resolution so they can put in the application.
Thank you. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, may I have a motion for Resolution 2025-23 for LSA grant for White Marsh Community Ambulance Association for a new garage, alerting system and fire alarm system for the station at 4019 Joshua Road Lafayette Hill?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Ms. Moy?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair, toll.
Yes. Resolution carries. Moving on, two motions. Do I have a motion to authorize the release of escrow number one for 401-433 Washington Street in the amount of $1,284,952.77?
So moved.
Second. Krista?
Good evening. This is the apartment development that's right on the border with Conshohocken. There are 67 units in White Marsh. They're requesting a release of $1,284,952.77, and we have inspected and are recommending the release of these monies.
Thank you. Is there any board comment? Any public comment?
Nothing online.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion accepting the recommendation by MCAB for a brand change
from White Marsh TV to White Marsh Community Access, with a new logo starting in 2026, as recommended by MCAB? Mr. McAnally?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes. Over the past couple months, the MCAB Munich Communications Advisory Board has been talking about rebranding WTV, which is White Marsh TV, to a, the White Marsh Community Access, because after 15 years of being in service, they're more than just TV, so they wanted to capture every social media and every media outlet that they use now and call it a community access. I'm having trouble pulling up the logo, but the logo is White Marsh Community Access. They went through different versions of it and came up with the final, the final look. So they, they recommended moving it from White Marsh TV to White Marsh Community Access, and just looking for the board to approve that. We would move forward with changing the logo and changing the name in 2026.
Thank you. Is there any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the financials for September 2025, reflecting expenditures of $889,656.43, payroll totaling $672,546.39, and pension plan expenditure totaling $10,431.37?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going down to the amended agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 4006 Butler Pike Abolition Hall to remove and replace the rear deck in like, as recommended by Harb, on 10/8/2025? Mr. McAnally?
So moved.
Second.
You're rushing.
I am rushing. I'm sorry.
Thank you. In the packet, which I can't pull up for some reason-
No worries.
-there's a rear deck in the, in the back of the main building, next to Abolition Hall, that has been there for several years. It is in terrible condition, I'll say, at this point. It is recommended, it went to the Harb Board yesterday morning. They reviewed the pictures. Some of them knew the deck itself. That is our access to the main building and, well, not to Abolition Hall, but to the main building. When we have our service people going in there, they're concerned with the condition of the deck, and it is, you know, it served its life. We're looking to remove that and replace it with a new in-kind deck, still pressure-treated wood, and the only difference is the railings are going to go from 36 inches to 42 inches, because now it will eventually be a public building. Right now, it's, 36 inches would be residential code, 42 is a commercial, and we'll add one more footer underneath for a little bit more support. So we're looking for a recommendation from the board, or an authorization from the board, and Charlie must have forgotten that up. Oh, Krista got that up. So there's some pictures there on the screen. You see it is in deteriorating conditions. So we're looking for authorization from the board to move forward with the project of removing and replacing in-kind.
Thank you, Craig. It's a definite safety hazard. I'm glad we're moving forward.
I am, too. I am, too.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to waive permit- Do I have a motion to waive permit fees for White Marsh Little League in the amount of $7,700 for installing their batting facility? So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes. A month or two ago, the Little League was in here, received approval for their batting tunnel, and they came in for their permits. The permits totaled $7,700, as they are a nonprofit, and they work in the community with most of our residents. They are asking for a waiver of those permit fees, and that's what we're here for, to see if you guys are in favor of waiving the permit fees for White Marsh Little League.
Thank you, Craig. Is there any board comment or questions? Is there any public comment? Could you come up?
I'll keep it short. I know everybody wants to get out of here. Ronseone 4056 Hillside Road. I just -- I couldn't see when I downloaded the PDF this afternoon, the number, okay? I didn't know if the number was 7,600 and change, and at the bottom, it looked like it was 4,700 to me, so I thought maybe it was a $3,000 deduction. Apparently, it's not. Having said that, and I'm fine with it. I mean, it's a good thing. The Little League does good things for the community, and it's nice that the township is able to waive that fee. But I guess I'm getting a little bit concerned or when the -- if anyone has an idea of when the project will start. I mean, you pull the permits, I'm sure they want to get things.
It's my understanding that they want to start fairly quickly, within the month.
Okay.
And get that started.
The plans have to first be recorded. They have not been recorded, to my knowledge.
Recorded?
I think wasn't it waiver of land development with the grading permit?
No. It was the land development.
Well, either way, they don't have that permit. They're still in plan review.
Yeah.
From an engineering standpoint.
So it's not going to be this month?
No.
I'm just saying, that's when they want to.
That's right.
So the plans are still in review, and I presume when Mr. Guttenplan and I had spoke briefly the last meeting, that they were -- your department was going to review the materials for the sound attenuation to see what type of materials that they were going to use for that.
That will be reviewed by the Building and Codes Department, yes.
All right.
And that condition is listed in our system, so we're not going to miss it.
Good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
None.
Oh, on this particular issue, we're going to get to regular public comment in just a minute. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Now, we're going to move into regular public comment. Do I have any public comment? Come on up.
My name is Mary Reekley. I live at 3,100 Quarry Lane in Lafayette Hill, and I'm here because I need help from the Board of Supervisors with an issue I've been having recently with my neighbor. He has been blowing hazardous concrete dust onto my property as well as the St. Philip Neary School behind us, and he is not a concrete removal contractor that I know of. I know he's a painting contractor. And apparently, I did meet the -- I mean, excuse me, I did contact the township. Actually, the township came to me because I put up a tarp on my property to protect the dust from blowing into it, and Mr. Stupinski came immediately and told me I needed to remove it. And I said, he's blowing concrete dust across my property. He said, I'm going to cite you. He took my picture, and he turned around and walked away. And then Mr. Kavanaugh continued to blow hazardous dust on the property for -- that was Tuesday morning, so he did it all day Monday, the 29th, the 30th, the 1st. He took off for the Jewish holidays because his kids were home. And then on Friday, continued to blow it. Then he stopped, for whatever reason, on the weekend. And then on Tuesday, I went and filed a police report. I haven't heard back yet, but the police officer did come to my house and after he spoke with Mr. Guttenplan and Mr. Kavanaugh. And it was not a good conversation when he came back to my house to tell me, you know, about the conversation that he'd had with the other two people. He did say that Mr. Guttenplan had told him that he was supposed to use mitigation, and I said, okay, we'll see what happens. And yesterday and today, again, he is blowing dust with a cement saw. It's about seven to nine inches. I have video I would love to show you, all of the videos. There's 48 of them where he blew with a leaf blower directly across my property fence, into my property. At minimum, that's trespassing. At maximum, that is eco-terrorism and causing a catastrophe because he's sending that hazardous dust, which causes lung cancer and silicosis, and is also a problem, a severe problem for people who have asthma. And those -- that dust is going everywhere. It can be a problem for people like me who have just dust allergies, but it can also be a problem for elderly people. Nobody knows. And he does not seem to have any care for anybody's health whatsoever. So I'm here to ask you, what else can we do about this? And would you like to see the videos? Because I would really love to show them to you.
I don't really need to see the videos. I can imagine what you're going through there. Does he have permits for this work?
This is mitigation for improvements that he put illegally with no permits. So he is under requirements from the township to remove certain improvements that were put there illegally. One of them happens to be a concrete patio that's apparently pretty thick, over stone, and tied into the house with rebar. So it's a major undertaking to remove it. We have him on a time schedule. Bob is checking in every four to six weeks to make sure he's making progress. We were completely unaware of what he was doing in terms of the leaf blower until I was visited by Officer Kevin Gailey on Tuesday after he visited Mary and saw what was going on.
Actually, excuse me.
And then I got an email from him indicating that he admitted he was doing that, and now what he said in the email to me was he was now wetting it down, which we'd asked him to do, and he wasn't using the leaf blower anymore. So -- and then I saw an email today where Mary posted the fact that he apparently is blowing dust again. And the police are still investigating, but I have not reported since Tuesday.
I would like to add to that, that when Mr. Stupinski came to my house and told me to remove the tarps, and I explained to him that he was blowing dust, I later that day, a couple hours later, contacted the Pennsylvania DEP, and then they responded, calling the township, and the township apparently told them, and I have this for you, if you guys want to see a copy of it. But the DEP, this is a report that Mary Jo Daly's office gave me, because the DEP only told me that they don't handle residential, they only handle commercial, which is ridiculous, but that's the law in Pennsylvania. So I asked my -- Mary Jo Daly to -- she's my representative, right? So I asked her to check into it, and the response I got was, DEP also told me that they already let White Marsh Township know about this situation, and that the township did visit 3,102 Quarry Lane earlier this week to talk to the concrete removal contractor about using dust mitigation strategies during the concrete removal activities. But they never came back to look at it. Mr. Stupinski never came back to visit. So even though I contacted the DEP and at that time told her that they were actively blowing dust, he did not come out to check it out. I have copies, if you want to see the response from Mary Jo Daly. I have videos. This morning, he was using the leaf blower, and he was blowing the concrete with a seven-inch saw. A jackhammer would probably have gotten done a lot faster and be done with it by now. So I don't understand why he's using a seven-to-nine-inch saw, but I don't appreciate the dust blowing.
So usually, when you're going to remove something like that, it's a professional.
Yes.
Because you do have to wet that down. If you're not wetting that down, I mean, I know this from when I worked in college in construction. If you're not wetting that down, that dust is going all over the place, and Mary's absolutely correct.
Yeah, Mr. Stupinski was out there and talked to the homeowner and explained that he needs to wet it down or use a wet salt.
But it sounds like he's not doing it. Is there anything else we can do? Like, what about this?
I got Bob to go out there tomorrow.
Can she get the tarp back up?
Oh, my tarp is up. I didn't take it down. I refused.
The tarp never was taken down.
Can she just leave it up without any problem?
It's going -- no, no. Excuse me. He is blowing the dust over my tarp. That's what he was doing all last week. He took the leaf blower and blew it over the tarp. And it doesn't matter, because once it hits the tarp, now it's going straight to St. Philip Neary. And that's another problem, because there's how many kids that go to school there? They had outdoor recess. Last week was beautiful. They were outside, and they had outdoor gym classes. So again, happy to show you the videos.
No, I got you. I mean, listen, I know exactly what you're talking about.
We'll have Mr. Stupinski go back out there and talk to the homeowner.
Okay. And then, you know, Mary, let us know how, what the culmination of that would be.
I will. Thank you.
And Charlie, what's the timeline for this man to be finished? Is there a deadline or a timeline that he has to have this work done?
There's a fair amount of work to do. We gave -- he asked for 10 months. We told him he has six, and we told him we wanted that Bob would be out periodically, and we want a progress report at five months of where he is. I'm not sure why it would take that long, but six months was a compromise from the 10 months. I don't know. I think it's -- it seemed to be a combination of the work that had to be done and when he could get it done and physically or be able to pay for the work. He sounded like he was not going to be doing all of it himself, that he was going to be hiring somebody, and that was one of the reasons he wanted a longer timeframe to be able to pay for it. What I've been hearing from everybody, including the police, is that he seems to be doing it himself with somebody that was helping him at some point. But the patio is only one thing he's required to do. There's a lot of gravel in the front of the property that has to be done. There was a shed that had to be removed. There was a lot of violations, unfortunately.
But the concern is.
And this all sort of came to a head when he came to the zoning hearing board requesting some variances for a addition for what's mounted to an in-laws suite. It wasn't for in-laws, it was for someone else, but that's what he -- and that's when it all, some of these issues came out, and Mary pointed these out at the hearing, and he eventually withdrew the application, but the end result was he was supposed to be doing all this work, and that was a year ago. And we only found out recently that he hadn't done any of it. And that's when we put the time schedule on paper and had him approve it in writing.
I was just going to reinforce what Fran was saying, and I think it sounds like we have to get Bob to go out there regularly to ensure that he is not doing this in a way that is inconsistent and unsafe.
Absolutely.
So you got to put him on a regular schedule to be inspected regularly.
My understanding is the police are still actively investigating it.
Well, not only that, but he's had a year. He made no attempt whatsoever to remove that according to the zoning solicitor's agreement he made with him back in October 11th, or, yeah, October 11th of 2024. He's had a year to remove this. He should be using a jackhammer, getting rid of it. Also, I would like to also make sure that, well, he put up no tarps anywhere around his property. He put up no protective measures. All right? And I don't know what the protective measures are for dust mitigation, for surrounding the property, if that would even help if he put it up to protect the school behind him. But when he's blowing that water and the dust, he did use some water, but he didn't use it on the drill. So what he did was, he was sawing and had the water going next to him on the ground, and then he would get up and use the hose and wash it down. And that was only for part of it. He used the leaf blower this morning, completely blew the dust all over the place. But my point is, when he's doing that construction work, I believe when you do anything like that, you should put some sort of barriers along so that dusty water, that's now concrete water, doesn't flow onto my property. I am downhill from him. So I want to make sure that he abides by whatever measures he needs to put up as well, because I don't want that stuff on my property. I don't, at all.
So Bob will be out there doing the inspections.
That'd be great.
Obviously, this is a -- what he's doing is a two-person job. You can't do that by yourself.
That's correct.
You can't cut cement alone.
That is correct. And like I said, I don't believe he is a general demolition or general demolition contractor at all. I don't know that he's had any experience with what he's doing.
Well, whatever he is, I mean, it sounds -- something's wrong here, so we got to try to right the wrong.
Thank you.
And let's see what Bob can do, and let us know. It sounds like the police are involved, you got all the authorities involved.
Yep, EPA as well, because DEP doesn't handle it, but EPA does.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Yes. Thank you, and keep us informed.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Any board comment? All right. I'm going to announce that we had executive session. The board had executive session on September 16th, and tonight on both real estate and personnel matters. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go Philadelphia sports teams.